Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A. Disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are livestreamed at www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaf. Public comments can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityoftaf.org. May be made by phone to the City Clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting, and all comments received will be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by City Manager Craig Jones with an invocation by Joey Pittman. If you'll join us all, please.
Salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. God, thank you for those that serve TAF. We just ask you, Lord, to give wisdom, knowledge, understanding, that TAF can just be an incredible place to live. And we think it already is, but we know it can be better. So, God, we invoke you and ask you to come and move in our meetings and our city. We thank you for that, in Jesus' name everybody said.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Joey. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
And Councilmember Chavera.
Here.
All right, first item on this evening's agenda is citizen requests public comments. I'm betting you dollars to doughnuts that Dr. Orin is going to come talk to us. All right, you know what? It is Dr. Kathy Orin with the chamber, if you would, please.
Well, it's my pleasure to be here. I haven't been here with this current group. I welcome you all to your duties and congratulations on your election. That tells you how long it's been. So, I want to compliment our mayor because he never disappoints when it comes time for the mayor to speak, and today was no exception. We were at a meeting, which he doubtless will tell you, I don't even know what it's called, but it had to do with carbon sequestering. Now you know what I know. It was a wonderful time to learn, and I certainly did learn. Not enough to explain anything to anybody, but what I did learn was, if you have not heard the term "carbon sequestering", you need to get on the ball because this is the future. And it can be scary if we don't get involved. And that's all I'm going to say. But thank you, Mayor Nor. It is always a pleasure to have you start a meeting with your positive, hold accountable demeanor, so.
Thank you very much, my pleasure.
Aye. Okay, so, that takes us right up to what I want to talk to you first, and that is something I want you all to put on your list of things to do. And that is Thursday, April 27th. That is going to be our State of the City luncheon. We do this every year. It's at the beautiful, and I do mean that, Transit Center. We love that venue. We're praying that it's all finished raining by then. And we are going to be attempting to talk to our community about just two things. Shocking, one of them is carbon sequestering. You won't be hearing from me. You'll be hearing from people that know how to explain this and its importance to us. You will also be hearing, I hope, from the administrators of our schools. Many of you woke up this morning to see teachers in Los Angeles picketing, other people picketing, and a general disruption of education again in our public schools. People have a tendency to think, well, if it's going on in Los Angeles, it must be coming here next, which is not accurate thinking. But we have that mentality sometimes. And I can assure you that our schools are, although we join everyone else in public education with wishing that we hadn't done all the sequestering, all the staying at home, all the stuff that we had to do. We are fine. And we're hoping to hear from the administration of our school districts to tell us that. So, now you know what's going to be on the docket for us to talk about. And I'm sure it will be a good time. So, I invite all of you. I don't have how much it's going to cost to go, but we try to keep this as low as possible because we want everybody to come. It's an informational meeting for our community. The next couple of days after that is Saturday, April 29th, and we will be celebrating the TAF High School Hall of Fame. And I want to just kind of whet the appetite of people that kind of think the Hall of Fame is kind of over there for those people and so forth. The Hall of Fame has been designed to has been designed to remind us that we all came out of TAF High. And the amazing thing is that we all did great things in different ways. And we honor those that have done extraordinarily great things. And it is a wonderful time to see old friends. It's a wonderful time to just remember how things were back in the day. And back in the day is different depending upon how far back our inductees go. Our first inductee is Mary Ann Snyder McClellan. She is the cousin of Dick Snyder, who has already been inducted into the Hall of Fame. I'm just going to give you a little snippet of these people. She'll be thrilled to know that she was greeted by music. Next time, Ron, if you could have that go when they announce my name, I think that would be lovely.
I'm sorry, I forgot to turn it down.
I don't know what song that was.
The Overture of the War of 1812.
Well then.
Get somebody's attention.
That's right.
I think you're deserving of that, Dr. Orin.
I appreciate that, yes. It just wasn't timed correctly, Ron. Next time went for me. Okay. This is what Mary Ann McClellan's cousin says about her. From her time at St. Mary's Grammar School to her graduation from Eastern Oregon State University with a 3.94 grade point average, some 38 years later, she overcame enormous perils, an arranged marriage that kept her from Berkeley, a union that utterly failed, a challenge of raising a half dozen children in her second marriage, the disappointments of gender discrimination in employment, the terror of assault while working in the field as a construction project manager. So, that just gives you a little taste, but I have to add something. After the children were raised, Mary Ann took up dancing and eventually spent time in Buenos Aires, learning the intricacies of the tango and traveling to diverse countries to enjoy different dance partners from around the world. Pretty cool, huh?
How about that?
Okay, I can hardly wait to meet her. I haven't met her yet. The second person that's being inducted is Ron Pierce. And Ron graduated from TAF Union High School in 1970 and continued his education at TAF College and continued to pursue martial arts training and teaching. He went from TAF College to trade school and met his wife. After marrying her, he continued to train in martial arts. And at his studio in Denver, he would work with the Denver Crime Victims Program. He moved his family to San Diego, and he's done 100 things. He's been all over the place. But from 1992 to 2013, he taught seminars geared towards combative tactics to the U.S. Capitol Police, the FBI, and the Secret Service in Washington, D.C., while continuing to run his business on the West Coast. In 2002, he obtained the level of Grand Master, and in 2009, he received the level of 10th degree Black Belt Grand Master. From 2013 to 2021, he worked for the Sergeant at Arms of the U.S. Capitol, at which time he retired from his business. He continued teaching at the U.S. Capitol Police as well as the D.C. Metropolitan Police, in addition to other government personnel. He did this while organizing and conducting his own training seminars on two coasts. He ultimately retired from the Washington, D.C. U.S. government.
My goodness.
I'd like to know if he was there during all the stuff, but I don't know. Okay, Kenneth C. Twissleman was born in California, and he went to TAF Union High School, graduating in 1970. Also went to TAF College, graduated in 1972 with an AA degree, and then went on to Davis and graduated with a degree in psychology, and then went on to Hastings College of Law. He clerked for Associate Justice of the Supreme Court, William P. Clark, excuse me, the California Supreme Court. After graduating, he relocated back here. He worked for a while in two different firms and decided to go into private practice in 1980. He is now the Honorable Kenneth C. Twissleman II, Judge of the Superior Code of Kern County in California. He was appointed to the bench by former Governor George Duke Magian in 1988. He has served as the Director of the Shafter Rotary Club, and he is also involved in the Kern County Cattlemen's Association and the Shafter High School Mock Trial Team. So, I think I've seen him in action. I'm not sure. At the time, I didn't recognize his name. I had other things on my mind. The last person is Roger Lewis Miller, and we know that Roger just recently passed away. He attended TAF High from 1967 to 1971. He participated in football and swimming, and he was the editor of both The Gusher and The Derek. Went to TAF College where he played football, and he was the editor of the then Cougar Echo. He transferred to CSU Northridge and edited The Sundial and The Seasun Magazine. He earned a BA in Mass Communications in 1975 and a teaching credential in 1976. He had a part-time job in public relations for ARCO to promote the new concept of self-service gas and convenience stores. After college, he was hired as a journalism instructor and public information director for the West Kern Community College, which we know as TAF College. And he worked on the award-winning yearbook Black Gold. He was a reporter for news and events of TAF College and creator of curriculum brochures and media guides for football. In 1980, he began his work for the family business, and since then, he was directing the growth of the business. Tenfold PPIs, Downhole Oil Filtration Systems are not only used in California and other U.S. states, but also by international oil producers. He is a published writer, photographer, private pilot, and salesperson. And he is missed. So, those are the honorees for our Hall of Fame. The Hall of Fame will be at the Transit Center. Social hour is at 5:00. 6 o'clock is the dinner. Tickets are on sale. You can buy them online at TUHS Hall of Fame, or you can get them at the Chamber. The dinner is $60 per person, and it'll be a wonderful evening. So, thank you for letting me share with you.
Thank you very much for coming, as always, Dr. Orin. All right, next up, Council Statements Non-Action. Councilman Chavera, begin with you this evening, sir.
Sure, thank you. So, I'm going to start off with Saturday. I was getting ready to go help out with the fundraiser, and I saw a crew out there, West Side Waste Management, cleaning up their crew from Hilliard Street all the way down to Kern Street. And, you know, it's nice. It is really, really nice to see, you know, anybody cleaning up our community. But West Side Waste Management coming out their crew. They were walking in front of businesses. They were walking in front of homes on the sidewalks and cleaning up our community. And that says a lot about the company, and they deserve our appreciation. And I just want to publicly let them know that we appreciate them helping with our community by cleaning it up. And then, Saturday, we had the Luis Ruwan fundraiser, which included the entire community. Our family was fortunate enough that we can help out by selling some tacos. But after it was all said and done, we were able to achieve their goal, and they have enough funds to purchase the sign for Luis's. It's going to be a sign on TAF Highway in honor of his name. But I also want to mention just a really couple, just a couple of people that helped out. Joshua's one of them. He was here in town at the time, so he gave me help cooking, helped me cook. There was also some young high school kids that stopped by and ex-high school students that stopped by. And they helped us load the equipment up, and we appreciate them. But the star of them all was Rex Cooper, no surprise. That kid is absolutely amazing. And we had the opportunity to observe him. He coordinated for the ASB to come out with some signs that they made for the family. He took it upon himself to get some tables and chairs for his family, which we could have gotten from the high school, but he had some of the employees come out and set them up. He brought water to be sold. And we were there at 8:00 in the morning. He was there by 9:00, and he didn't leave until me and Josh left that evening. So, kudos to a great young man being raised well in the community. I also want to just share that this Friday, excuse me, this Saturday is TAF High's prom, and it will be located at the Transit Center. And then, you guys know that I enjoy my quotes. I think that other people say them better than I do, so if I could just share them really quick. And it's in regards to the community. "It is only when we stand up with all our failings and sufferings and try to support others rather than withdraw into ourselves that we can fully live the life of community." This one is by Tom Vilsack. "People working together in a strong community with the shared goal and a common purpose can make the impossible possible." "Community is not an ideal. It is people. It is you and I. In community, we are called to love people just as they are with their wounds and their gifts, not as we want them to be." And finally, by Jane Goodall. "What you do makes a difference, and you have to decide what kind of difference you want to make." Thank you very much.
Where's the wisdom? Thank you very much, sir, appreciate that. Councilman Waldrop.
I'd like to report on the League of California Cities, San Joaquin Valley Division. They met at the Padre Hotel. Rudy Mendoza, President from Woodlake, started it off. And he introduced Mayor Karen Coe, did I pronounce that right? She gave the welcome for everybody that was there. They approved the minutes, the Treasury Report, and they elected the first Vice President. And he was from Sanger, Daniel Martinez. The State League Director report, and this one's going to be tough. Cal Dip Thurston, T-H-U-S-U. He was from Dinuba, gave a report on this and that and whatnot, and it was very interesting. And their next meeting will be May 11th, 2023, but I'm not sure what town, so. Anyway, further comment from last meeting, when Councilmember Carlos gave a report on Kenny Wright. His funeral is the last day of this month. It's going to be at the graveside, 10:00 AM. And a lot of reports are coming in from Class of '62. They're getting a lot of people there, so if you're to make it, that'd be nice. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Councilman Bryant, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it's been a busy couple of weeks since we last met. And this morning, today is probably the perfect example of how busy it's been. So, Chief, do I give you kudos, or do I give those to your new Admin Assistant Jerry for bringing back Coffee with a Cop?
I'm going to go with my.
Good call, attaboy. You know, that kind of fell by the wayside as we got into the midst of COVID. And I'm really, really happy to bring him back. I mean, after talking with you this morning, I'm really happy to know we're going to kind of work out the timings, dates, try to make sure we can engage the whole community. It's an important thing, especially here in California, so they can hear from the horse's mouth what we're doing, you know, why we can't do certain things, or what we're doing to try to improve and maintain good quality of life here in the city of TAF. So, I appreciate you, I appreciate your troops, and I appreciate that effort very, very much. You know, that was what, 8:00 to 9:00 this morning?
Just a little. It lasted a little longer, but yes.
You know, and I will say Kern County Sheriff's Office, the California Highway Patrol also joined. They're critical parts of our law enforcement environment here in Western Kern, especially as we butt up next to areas that aren't patrolled by TAF City. And so, I'm happy that those guys are able to engage as well because, again, having access to those folks is critical and very nice. You know, at 11:00, we talked a little bit. Mayor, did you mention this already, am I imagining? I know we talked, oh, it was Kathy.
It was Kathy.
Trying to figure out where my brain's at this morning. And we talked about carbon capture. And I was very pleasantly surprised to see how many people attended that today. Now, I will say that I'm sure it was a number of government officials, industry partners, and even political lobbyists on either side of the debate. I wish there was more folks, you know, everyday Joes, but I get it. It's an 11:00 meeting on a workday. I understand, but it's critical that we get involved and at least listen to understand, and then we can also perpetuate that information to those people around us who can't make it. But along those lines, you know, TAF College hosted a meeting by the, I think it was B3K, in coincidence with Kern Community College District through SURF, and I believe Kathy was there. SURF is the Community Economic Resilience Fund. And I'm sure that there's parts of that that may have motives alternative to what we might believe in. However, it's critical that we are there to engage and give our feedback to make sure that what we're ultimately handed as far as a bill of goods, when that process is over, that we've had a hand in that. Otherwise, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So, please, as you can, get engaged. I'm going to say it over and over throughout my statement here tonight. I did ask those gentlemen, and I hope it's okay with the council, that they come and present to the council at least the idea of what they're trying to do as another way to engage the community. Because I only find out because I'll get emails because I've looked into this and asked questions. I understand they're doing these during the evening, and they're trying to accommodate schedules, and you're never going to get everybody. But I don't think it's advertised particularly well to the average Joe. And the average Joe is who needs to be informed because they're going to be the ones voting as well. After the carbon capture and sequestration meeting today, we had, you know, I celebrated at TAF City School District with Conley School today. I'm a South TAF kid. I grew up in South TAF, went to Conley School. And this year marks 110 years that Conley School has been in service to the people of the West Side. I spent six years there when I was a youth. And I walked back in today, and my first reaction was, wow, it still looks similar. But gosh, it looks a lot smaller than it did 20-some years ago. And I think it's just a matter of perspective. When you're, you know, not 240 pounds, and however short I am, things look a lot bigger. But I'm happy to say that that campus is one of the most beautiful campuses you're going to find anywhere around. And I just want to wish a happy birthday to my old stomping grounds at Conley School. You know, the West Side Rec had their 75th anniversary mixer not long ago. And a lot of the agencies that are in and around town have been serving the community for, you know, decades, if not centuries. That's a marked achievement, and I look forward to the next 75 to 100 years of both of them. See, what else do we have here? I wanted to send a shout-out to the Avid program at TAF High. Those kids, seniors, they're tasked with producing a community service learning project. And they all have to be different. According to criteria, they're not supposed to be anything that's really been done within the last three to five years. And I was able to participate in one, kind of along the lines of what Carlos mentioned as far as community service. We started, they said, "We want to have a community service trash pickup", just a very basic one, and they picked Ford City Park as a place to start. Why not? So, we went down there, and surprisingly enough, they were having a wedding the same day at Ford City Park. So, some of that work was already done. And I'm happy to say we were joined by probably 10 to 15 members of the indigenous Wahoucan community. What's Valentin's last name, Carlos? I'm sorry. So, Mr. Baptista was kind of at the forefront of those, but those men engaged. Those men were willing to give of their time on Saturday to come out and work hand-in-hand, arm-in-arm with those teenagers and a couple of white guys, you know, to pick things up. And not only did we do Ford City Park, we moved up to Center Street. We started over there by the DMV, worked all the way up, just picking up general trash, back through the alleyway, just picking up refuse and things like that. And I'm very, very proud of not only those kids for investing that time and effort in planning, but of those gentlemen for joining us. Because, as Carlos mentioned, it is a community. And community is not just an ideal. It's effort to be part of it and to make what you want. Let's see, I was, again, happy you mentioned the Ruwan fundraiser. I'm happy to say Carlos didn't fire me. I did work for, I don't know, about eight hours. He paid me in tacos, as you can probably tell when I stand up. But I'm very happy and proud to have participated in that and very, very thankful for that. So, I will say this. Along the lines of being a community member and kind of following the lead that Carlos gave, I'll give a quote too, but I'm a sports guy. I've always loved sports, and I like trying to figure out, find ways that quotes from sports can translate to life. And so, there's a coach who currently coaches at Fresno State. His name is John Baxter. And one of the things he's been coined to saying is champions embrace the work, wannabes embrace the idea. And if you take that to heart as a community member, we can. And if you take that to heart as a community member, we can complain all day long about what we do and don't have, or what we don't have particularly, or you can get out on the front of it and be a part of the change. Pick which one, which team you want to be on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Mayor Pro-Tam Cryer.
Mayor, I will keep this very, very brief. All I want to say is God bless our law enforcement, and thank you guys very much for what you guys do. Thank you.
All right, that was brief.
Yes.
But important. Thank you all very much. All right, a lot going on in Taft. Since we, we touched on the carbon capture and sequestration, the folks that came to town, actually, this wasn't the first time they came to the city of Taft. They came to the city of Taft, I believe it was about two weeks ago, and that meeting wasn't particularly well advertised. Three of the four people that showed up was myself and Fred and Barbara Holmes. And there were two presenters, and one of them was Chris with Teravolt, CRC, and the other was representative of Bakersfield City College. And they came to talk to us about carbon capture. And it's not just carbon capture that works in tandem with industry, but this is fresh air and carbon capture. The Teravolt concept is fresh air and carbon capture, which is an interesting concept, and it's, it's difficult to make it all pay when one understands the fact that CO2, carbon dioxide in our atmosphere is at a concentration of about .04%, four one-hundredths of one percent of our atmosphere. What we're breathing right now is CO2. And so they want to basically suck it in, remove the CO2, sequester it, stick it in the ground. The CO2 that comes out of the exhaust stack of a gas-fired turbine generator is somewhere between 3% and 4%. The CO2 that comes out of a coal-fired plume electrical generation would be somewhere between 10% and 14%. Some of the other things in modern world that we use and we count on, and two of the most carbon-intensive products that are the very foundation of modern life are cement and steel. And they're carbon-intensive, and their emissions-intensive, and once we come up with the technology, we scale the technology to actually remove the non-beneficial issues, or the detrimental issues, I should say, then people aren't going to have a hard time with the product. I've talked many times about the fact that I've been many places and spoken with many large groups of people, and I've never seen anybody hold up a sign that said, I want to spend the rest of my life without enjoying the benefits of oil and gas and petrochemicals. Nobody has ever held that sign up, because that would be absolutely ignorant. That means you want to, you want to live on an island somewhere naked eating coconuts and sugarcane, because we all count on it and we always will. So it's dealing with the emission side. It's not dealing with a normally occurring organic material that's so beneficial to mankind, and that's oil and gas. But carbon capture is not the silver bullet that's going to save the world either. Carbon capture is not an energy source. Carbon capture is one of those cogs in a belt. It's one of those gears. It's a part of the multi-pronged necessary approach that we have to take in order to ensure our viability and our quality of life for generations to come. We have got to be better stewards of everything we do and everything we use. This planet only has so many resources, whether they be oil or gas, or they be organic in nature-like food, trees, coconuts, water, metals, all of the above. Okay, everything is limited resource, and we've just got to do a really good job of being stewards of our environment. And carbon capture is exciting. It's coming to town. There's going to be many more meetings about it. The value of captured carbon has gone up with the last $1.4 trillion bill that was signed into law that came out of Washington. So a lot more excitement about it. You'll be hearing more about it, and, and we will be involved, because it's going to happen on the West Side. It's not going to happen underneath Bakersfield. It's going to happen in depleted oil zones with caprock. It's been going on for some time, but it's really going to take center stage in this area, and it's, it's exciting technology, and it's going to be necessary. So we'll continue to update everybody on that, and we will stay engaged, like I say. One of the things that you brought up, Councilman was talking about, you went up Center Street, and then you came back through the alleys. You know, it's interesting, because we as homeowners or business owners, we often spend a great deal of time on the front yard. If you live in a corner lot, you also take care of the side yard, but how often do we actually spend time in the alley? That's the backside of our property. And I try to keep mine clean where I am, but I just want to remind everybody, your property doesn't end at your rear fence line. Typically, there's a little bit of dirt somewhere between it and the alleyway if you back up to an alley. And right now, there's weeds growing in it. There's weeds growing everywhere. I actually went to Bullhead City this past weekend, and I'm telling you, mountain ranges, solid rock mountain ranges that I used to drive by are green. They are tinted green. There is green growing where it's never grown before. So everybody get out there while the soil's moist, pull those weeds, throw them in a trash can, you know, because the rear part of your property is just as much your responsibility as the front part of your property. Take pride in who you are and where you live and what you own, and it'll show. So I want to thank everybody for that moving forward. All right then. Next up, Planning Commission Report, item number three. We have Planning Commissioner here. Hello, Jerry.
Hello, Mayor Nor, members of the council. Planning Commission had one item on the agenda. It was the beginning of the process we've talked about just recently, which is the update to the housing element for our general plan. It's going to be a few months at least of continual review, discussion, and advice, working with our planning director to develop that. And once it is completed, it will be brought to you folks for approval and then sent on up to the state for their approval. The initial discussions were just more of a getting two of our planning commissioners who haven't had the joy of dealing with the housing report, familiar with the process, and giving us a chance to take a look at what the new numbers might look like. Nothing other than just a simple review and discussion was held, and no decisions were made at that point, and I'm not anticipating any for a little while, probably at least through the summer, given the significant amount of work that our planning director is going to have to put into developing the numbers and preparing the new report. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for coming and reporting to us. Appreciate you. Next up, Department Reports. All right, thank you very much, Chief. Chief McMinn is going to talk to us.
This was to reiterate what Councilman Bryant said today. We had Coffee with a Cop at the Joe's Cafe, and it's nice to have troops like I have. I give them one, I give them one task. Let's have one we need to have it, we haven't done in a while, let's get it taken care of. And like Josh said, Jerry, our new admin assistant, along with our PIO Officer Robert Gomes, jumped forward, got ahold of Joe, made it happen. It's nice to just give them a task and it just gets taken care of. It's a pleasure being the facility manager or the manager or chief of troops like that. I was really happy. So we are going to change some things around. We're going to make it to where, like we said, the everyday citizen gets a chance to come in, not just individuals who are retired or, you know, for whatever reason are not at work, or for whatever reason have the luxury of not having to go to work, or being able to take an hour off or whatever to go down there and speak their mind. We want the everyday citizen to come in and voice their opinion, so we're going to change one to a Saturday or Sunday. That's going to happen soon.
Excellent, all right. I know everybody will look forward to it. Thanks for your efforts. Appreciate it, Chief.
Chief, make sure you give my apologies to Officer Gomes. I didn't mean to single out Jerry if he did some work too, so. He'd give me grief if I didn't say that. He deserves it. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No worries, no worries. Next up, item number five, City Manager Statement. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. No statement tonight.
All right. Item number six, City Attorney Statements. Jason.
Thank you, Mr. State, Mr. Mayor.
All right then. Item number seven, Future Agenda Requests. Any future agenda requests this evening, gentlemen?
None for me.
All right then. Well, we'll move forward to the Consent Calendar Items eight through, eight through 12. "All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by a one-roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would wish to comment on?" Seeing none, those items are: Item number eight, the minutes for the March 7th regularly scheduled meeting; Item number nine, the payment of bills, some $246,000; Item number 10 would be the monthly report for Kern County Station 21. The recommendation is to receive and file the monthly report for February 2023 from Kern County Fire Truck Number 21. Item number 11 is a ratify agreement with Wallace Group for regulatory compliance assistance. The recommendation is, number one, ratify the already executed agreement with Wallace Group for preparation and update of the sanitary sewer management plan, update and spill emergency response plan 2023, and, item two would be, find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060 C-3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. Lastly, item 12, the purchase of five 12-gauge shotguns. Recommendation is, one, entertain a motion to accept the quote provided by pro-force law enforcement and appropriate $2,806.63 from the asset forfeiture fund for purchase of five new 12-gauge shotguns. And secondly, find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060 C-3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. Does any member of the council wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar? Seeing none at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items eight through 12.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro-Tam Cryer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Chivera?
Yes.
And Mayor Nor.
Yes, and that passed on a 5-0 vote. Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda, item number 13, vote for appointment to the governing board of the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, Kern City seat. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. There's currently a vacancy on the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board that must be filled by a council member from a small city having a population less than 100,000. According to the procedures adopted by the committee, the next steps in the appointment process for all cities within Kern County to select a candidate from the applicants from the vacant positions as follows. Mayor Cory Morris, City of Maricopa, Councilmember Gilberto Reyes, City of Wasco. Copies of the applications I each are attached in your package.
All right, thank you very much, City Manager Jones. Recommended act, recommended action is, number one, hold a vote for a nominee for appointment to the district governing board. Secondly, we would have a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, Resolution of City Council of City of Taft nominating the members stated below in the resolution to the Special City Selection Committee for Appointment to the District Governing Board, and find it is not SEQA. So first off, item number one, hold a vote for a nominee for appointment to the district governing board. There are two nominees that have turned in their applications. Mayor Cory Morris, City of Maricopa, and Councilmember Gilberto Reyes, City of Wasco. I would open nominations, so I'll open the Florida nominations.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to support Cory Morris from the great city of Maricopa.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other nominations, gentlemen? No? Okay, well then, we have one nomination, that would be Mayor Cory Morris, City of Maricopa. Maybe we have, okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, Resolution of City Council of City of Taft nominating Mayor Cory Morris, City of Maricopa, in this resolution to the Special City Selection Committee for Appointment to the District Governing Board.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro-Tam Cryer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Chivera?
Yes.
And Mayor Nor.
Yes, and that passed on a 5-0 vote. Thank you all very much. Lastly, item three, a portion of this is to find that this activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060 C-3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. I'll get to page three here. Okay, that brings the open session portion of this evening's meeting to a close. This council will go into closed session, session for two items. Item A, conference with labor negotiator Craig Jones, City Manager, Government Code Section 54957.60 units. Secondly, item B, conference with real property negotiator Craig Jones, City Manager, Government Code Section 54956.8 undisclosed parcel. I want to thank you all for coming and being a part of your city council meeting. Everybody take care, stay dry. Winter is almost over, almost. Good evening.